Alonza, 2043 San Marino Way South, Clearwater, Florida, 33763. This goes right along with what the gentleman was just speaking about. I think it's at least a year that I came to talk to you about the policy and procedures for registration of lobbyists, how Clearwater defines a lobbyist. I know when I go over to speak to the county, if I want to talk to a commissioner, I have to sign in and I have to say what I'm there to talk about, what is the topic. And last year, when I came to look at the lobbyist registrations for the whole year, no, I think it was like, excuse me, it was more like over a 10-year period, only 17 people had ever filled out a lobbyist registration form. And today, when I went to look, there were some forms filled out from last year by one of the representatives from the chamber, Zach Thorne, who represents the government committee. So last year, he filled out about four of them. And Katie Cole filled out one, she was representing something. But I just don't think the policy and procedure is very clear because you're meeting with representatives from the church and they're not having to fill out any, anything. And I talked to city clerk and she said, "Well, you keep your own calendar and that's where you record who you're meeting with and what you meant about on your own personal calendars." And then, but I just don't think the policy and the procedures are at all clear and I really think you need to look at them and make them clear. And I don't think, you're identifying a lobbyist as a paid person. Well, if you come and lobby on behalf of the chamber or the Church of Scientology or Paymark, I mean, you're still lobbying. So you don't need to define it as someone's getting paid. You just say, "People are coming to talk to a commissioner on their personal agenda" and they should, they should record it. And, you know, they're, just for your own sake, you should have a record of it. So, okay. I think there was something else I wanted to talk to you, but I forgot now. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wishing to speak tonight? I'm not on the agenda.
Bob Scott, 2432 Summerlin, here in Clearwater, also the pastor of the church across the street with the mayor. And council members, I, you all have been put in a really difficult situation over the last couple of weeks. There's been articles in the paper every single day. So I know there's been a lot of pressure put on you. And you've had a difficult situation, having to have conversations with the largest property owner and stakeholder in downtown. So I understand that and I understand the need for, to explore every avenue for what is in the best interest of Clearwater. But again, I would like to echo the comments that the lack of transparency, I think, is what is most troubling. I'm trying to keep an open mind about what's going on, what happens in downtown. I want to see what's best for downtown Clearwater as well. I think it's the lack of transparency that is the most troubling to citizens, at least for myself. So I was going to ask, or I would like to hope, that during your closing comments, that since this issue is not on the agenda tonight, but if during your closing comments, if each of you could speak to this issue, how you feel about it and what you think needs to happen next. Mr. Mayor, I would hope the same as well. I'd just like to hear from the council members as to what is going on and how you feel about it and where you think it needs to go. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public wishing to speak tonight? I'm not on the agenda.
I'm Maria Lynch, 1618 Tuscola Road, Clearwater. This is my first city council meeting and I felt motivated to come tonight because prior to this, I always had great faith and trust in the way the city was run. But I want to add my voice to the concerns that were raised about these discussions, the lack of transparency, the lack of public input in such a big decision. And I implore you to make yourselves more transparent and to have public input into this decision.
Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Mayor.
I'm Fran Bradford at 1660 Cleveland, a lifetime resident of Clearwater, a teacher at Clearwater High School, a member of Peace Memorial across the street. And I just want to go on record as saying that I too am very concerned, I think you all are concerned as well, about what things are going on and the procedures and the private meetings. And I think we can still clean this up and do it the right way, please. I have a lot of faith and trust in you. My very first meetings, I really have had a lot of faith and trust in you. So we, I wish you luck in getting it done and we're going to be right here trying to help.
Hi, Mark Bunker, 803 North Keene Road, right across from Scientology's Hossie and the Gardens. And I believe I've been a very good neighbor to them. I just wanted to bring up a couple gentle reminders and maybe a couple of tips. I know that, Mr. Mayor, you and the city have been trying to work very hard to cooperate with Scientology and get the downtown redeveloped. I am fully behind putting the aquarium downtown. That sounds like a great idea and I hope Scientology allows you to do it. There are a couple, a couple reminders, a couple reminders I'd like to make. When Scientology snuck into town back in the 70s under a phony name of United Churches and Al Ron Hubbard bought the Fort Harrison Hotel in the bank building, they put into motion a covert operation discovered by the FBI when Scientology's headquarters were raided called Project Normandy, whose goal was the complete takeover of Clearwater. Now, more recently in 2000, in one of Scientology's publications, they put it right there in the first paragraph of their article, that their still, their goal is still to make Clearwater the first Scientology city. That's just something to remember as you're negotiating with them. Now, it may be nice to say, "Hey, will you let us buy, put the aquarium down here and we'll let you have all the restaurants and shops downtown?" It's not the best way to negotiate. Scientology trains all of their members in something called TR bull baiting, training routine bull baiting, where they teach you how to control and be controlled. And one of the most important things here is using Tone 40, which I think you've shown some flashes of tonight. It is to loudly talk to people and command them and it includes pointing your finger. So instead of asking, "Hey, Ms. Cabbage, can we do this?", tell them, "Listen, Ms. Cabbage, we're going to put the aquarium down here and you stay out of our way." That's the type of language that Ms. Cabbage respects. That's what's being trained. And the reason it might be useful with him is because nobody in Scientology can talk to him that way. He controls everybody else through Tone 40, but no one is allowed to talk to him that way. So it might surprise him. The other thing is, you've got a resource here in the area, a fellow named Mike Rinder, who used to be the head of the Office of Special Affairs, the Dirty Tricks Department of Scientology. He's now out. He worked with Leah Remini on Scientology: The Aftermath. A second season is coming up. A full episode on Clearwater might be a good idea. But you can talk to Mike Rinder, put him on speed dial, talk to him about how to negotiate with Ms. Cabbage. Talk to him about what it's like to have Ms. Cabbage hold you and be physically beaten by Slappy Ms. Cabbage and then thrown into the hole, where he was kept for two years under brutal conditions. Ice partner.
Let me remind you that we are speaking on Agenda Item 10.6, which has to do with the sale of the property from the Clearwater Marine Aquarium to the city. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to this Agenda Item 10.6?
McGough, 628 Cleveland Street. Again, this talks about the purchase of the property that we're talking about. I'm a downtown resident and I wholeheartedly hope that we, the city does purchase it again. I was against the individual meetings, but I don't know what happened to that, but I hope that we were not swayed one way or the other and that we, the city does purchase the property and use it for whatever the city wants to use this property for, for the redevelopment that benefits the city. And that the transparency does come through on that, that benefits all the residents of the city of Clearwater and the purchase of the property. So I wholeheartedly wish that you do go ahead and purchase the property next door. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak to Agenda Item 10.6?
Maria Lynch, 1618 Tuscola Road. We're talking about the future of our beautiful city. I strongly urge you to purchase this property. A lot of us have spoken about what we've read in the newspaper, what the meetings that we've heard you've had. None of that's been on the agenda. But I implore you as individuals to be transparent. We're all invested in the city. It's our city. It belongs to all of us. This is a good plan. I think we should go forward with it. I think the city should purchase this piece of property and I think that all of downtown should be developed for the purpose of all the residents of Clearwater. It's a public space and it belongs to the public.
I know that, or what I've read, because I don't know what goes on because it's not in a public forum where it should be. I can only go off the articles that have come out in recent days in regard to what's going on and with the Church of Scientology apparently really working you guys to be able to purchase this lot, because they want to put up even more housing, house more of their people and, you know, quite frankly, I think they own enough housing and enough buildings that they let sit empty and take up space and that they don't pay all the taxes on. I know they pay real estate taxes on a portion of them, but they don't pay intangible tax on millions and millions of dollars of personal property. I looked it up, so I know that to be true. So I guess I would say that this would be very important for the city to do because while the Scientology people are here and we understand that, we respect their right to be here, I think the time to stop is now. I think them owning as much as they own is enough and the city would benefit greatly from owning this aquarium lot because we could then further develop it and put it into use for all of the residents of the city of Clearwater rather than another building to house more Scientologists in downtown. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public to speak?
Move to approve Agenda Item 10.6.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10.6. Any other comments, council? Mr. Hamilton.
I'm going to make a few comments here. My position on buying this property is extremely clear. I have made the comment publicly from this seat that I think that piece of property next door has great value. And the only way we can control what happens on that property is for us to own it. Now, that's why I'm in favor of this agenda item. Now, I'm going to publicly address you and everybody watching on why I took a meeting with Mr. Ms. Cabbage. You elected me three years ago to represent you. You put your faith in me to sit in this seat and represent you. I take that very seriously. Your positions regarding this property next door and a lot of the other things regarding Scientology are very, very close to my opinions. That is why I was more than willing to take the meeting with Mr. Ms. Cabbage because I know he is not going to come here at this point in time with what, with what he is doing. He's not going to come here and do a public meeting. But this is one of those times, and I told so many people before I ever had the meeting, this is why you put your trust in me. Because I went to listen to what he was saying, but also to let him know my intent is to buy that property. Regardless of anything else he wants to present to me, my intent is with, when and if and when I get the opportunity to vote, I am voting to buy this property next door. Now, the rest of it was just information gathering that was, is nowhere near soup, would never get done and never happen without public input, numerous public meetings that everyone in this room and in the entire community would have opportunity to attend and express their opinions on. So, and made it very clear to Mr. Ms. Cabbage that Clearwater will be the lead dog in anything that happens in downtown Clearwater. That is non-negotiable from my seat. So, you know, you can vilify me for meeting with him one-on-one if you want, but it was the only way I could deliver that message to him. That's why I took the meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Claudel.
Thank you, Mayor. Transparency is very important and to be organic and remain organic is very important. As you all know, we had, we hired ULI. ULI came back with a recommendation. We hired HRNA and we are working together going forward on a transparent development of the entire city of Clearwater. The city manager, the city attorney, the staff, all have been working very hard on many projects, not just this Bluff Master Plan, but they are also working on the Seminole North Bay Area Plan. They're working on US 19 Corridor. They're working on complete streets projects. They're working on even beautifying Missouri Avenue thanks to Mr. Johnson's efforts to get landscaping in the areas that are looking kind of rough. My reason to the public and to the Scientology and members of the Scientology, my reason was because we already had met with Mr. Ms. Cabbage here at City Hall one-on-one and there was no reason why I thought that we needed to meet again in, and I have been in that building. I have been to events in that building. And quite honestly, I think that we were going, we were transparent and working together. And I still think, and I encourage everybody, to continue to stay involved, continue to know your city, continue to get involved. There's so many wonderful things going on, not only in the city of Clearwater, but in the city of Dunedin, in the city of Tarpon Springs, in the city of Safety Harbor. We have 24 cities in Pinellas County. Pinellas County is the county seat in the city of Clearwater, guys. Let's be proud of it and let's all work together, no matter what organization you belong to, because it's very important. And I was elected by 110,000-plus citizens and I believe that my reason was no other reason other than I had already met with him here at City Hall with the city manager months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're kind of explaining what happened on Tuesday, I would like to say that I received an invitation to a presentation on retail strategies for downtown. Prior to attending that meeting, I asked if it was a presentation or if there was going to be an ask that would have to be presented to the city council for approval. I was told that it was a presentation. So during the meeting, when a video was begun showing the improvements to the property that is the subject of this agenda item, I interrupted and said, "I thought we were here for a retail presentation. If you do anything related to that, then it must be shown at a council meeting or be available to all council members," because I knew all council members were not attending the individual meetings. We got back to the discussion of the retail strategies and that discussion was concluded. As far as transparencies, when I walked to the meeting, I talked to two TV stations prior to going into the meeting to tell them what was going on. After the meeting, I talked to three TV stations and probably spent about 10 or 15 minutes telling them what I had heard and letting them ask any questions that they had. After that, I received a call from the Tampa Bay Times and spent a half hour talking to her about the meeting. I wish my memory was even, even better, but I recalled everything and shared everything and I'd be happy to do that with, with members of the public. So I'm, I did not connect that meeting with this, with this property and I, I think there are two separate subjects. I do recall the Urban Land Institute report that was done three years ago, which talked about trying to create a partnership. And when you create a partnership, one of the things that you have to realize is perhaps the partnership needs to be understood the same way from both sides. But that agreement is probably going to take a lot of communication. And I'm willing to communicate with any segment of the population in Clearwater, whether it's somebody in countryside or the beach or, or North Greenwood. And I try to get out to all those areas and I, I'm available to talk to, to folks. And I'm going to wait until the 20th of April to see who else comes to this meeting and their other comments before a final vote is made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I guess I'm the fifth wheel.
Well, you're fourth.
Oh, that's right. I was going to start out by saying, when I went to the meeting, my meeting was at yesterday?
Tuesday.
On Tuesday. I went in, I didn't see a reporter in the world around. And I was told that they were going to be there and I felt a little slighted. Maybe I have a face for print instead of a face for TV, I don't know. And so I had the meeting and it was, Mr. Horn was at all of our meetings and I think he could verify they were all pretty much the same pitch that he made to us, what he would like to do for downtown, what he called a facelift of Cleveland Street, plus buy the property. And when I left, I was again disappointed because the press had already gone to bed, I guess. And I didn't get to talk to any reporters except by phone. I talked to someone from the Tampa Bay Times and the Clearwater Beacon. Now, let me, let me talk to you about one-on-ones. By the way, I've been on, in office for a year now. Well, not in office, but elected a year ago this week. And I thank you for, some of you anyway, who voted for me. I'm really a school teacher who happens to be on the city council. And I'm also a member of the Sons of the American Revolution and I have strong beliefs, strong feelings about the Constitution, the First Amendment. And as a city council member, it's my part of the government is I'm responsible to you. And my job is to listen to you. 10 to 12 percent of you are Scientologists. And am I going to say, "No, I'm not going to listen to them"? Would I be doing my responsibility? I don't believe so. So I, and I've, I've had meetings with pastors of all sorts of denominations, as well as the head of the Church of Scientology. I've met with people who have needs and come to me with needs. I've met with people who, who would like to do some things and I said, "Let me look into it." My, my job is sort of to be a conduit, a help to all the residents of Clearwater. So when somebody says, "Would you come and listen to a presentation?", I would say yes to anybody. I think that's only fair. And to exclude someone of a religion that we may not agree with, well, there are a lot of people with religions that I don't agree with and my religion, a lot of them may not agree with me. Are they going to exclude me? I hope they don't. We are all Americans, we're all citizens and we all have the First Amendment, the right to free speech. And in one-on-ones, you have the right to privacy. I'm not going to blab. If you come in to me with a problem, a complaint, unless you want me to talk to somebody about something, it's between you and me, whether the head of the Church of Scientology or someone who's having trouble with their neighbor. I don't treat anybody any differently. And I, I hope you'll all understand that and understand why I do that. And maybe sometime down the road, you'll agree with me. Maybe not tonight. Thank you.
We have a rule here, or I have a practice, that at two hours, we take a break. But I knew that if we took a recess at eight o'clock, that y'all would get upset. And so staff is enduring going beyond that little two-hour break. And I appreciate, I hope you appreciate what my colleagues have said. We have been elected to represent you, but "you" is singular and is also plural. We represent the community. And my colleagues have done a very good job of explaining their position. Understand that we represent the city of Clearwater, all of you. And if you think that one meeting compromises our responsibilities and our obligation to you, the city of Clearwater, then you are gravely mistaken. Each one of us understands that the prime responsibility is to our city. We meet, as was indicated, with individuals all the time. We meet with developers. We meet with contractors. We meet with individuals who have problems, who don't like each other, who don't like us sometimes. But that is our responsibility to listen. And we gather information. And if we exclude one person because we don't like him or we don't like what they stand for, is that America? Is that what our veterans have fought for? And I know that this is a very sensitive subject. But if you were a developer or had an interest in a project and wanted to bounce an idea off of us, you come in and do it. The fact that the press doesn't cover it, that's their right. But you can go to sleep tonight knowing that the five of us and your staff that represents, that works for you is dedicated to the city of Clearwater and you don't have to worry about that. Now, I will also say that sometimes we make decisions, just like you, that you may not be happy with the next day. But that doesn't mean that you were bribed or bought or did something deceitful. No, but I could tell by the smiles on some of your faces.
I don't think there's any implications.
Okay. Well, there have been people who have said that we've been bought, that we've been bribed, that we've been drugged, et cetera. Okay? I'm trying, I think each one of us has explained to you their reasons very thoughtfully. This has been a difficult week for each one of us and I'm sorry if you do not appreciate that. The motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10.6. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken, do you have any other reports for us?
No, sir.
Mr. Horn, do you have anything else for us? Ms. Claudel, closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to say to all of the citizens of the city of Clearwater, as again, as I said earlier, there are a lot of things going on in Pinellas County and in this city. And I encourage everybody to get involved because as the mayor just said, we need you guys to stay involved so that we know what directions you want us to go in. Much like you heard discussions about the approval of our resolution for the Bluff Master Plan, we need all of you to stay involved and we need to hear your voices. So I encourage everybody to continue to stay involved. This is a beautiful, beautiful city and county with the number one beach. You know, we need to be organic, transparent, you know, and to the members of the organizations the organization that has asked for, for the, of all five of us to meet, none of us, I believe, have a problem with interfacing with any organization, as the mayor just said. We just need all of you to stay engaged and help develop our beautiful city. There's many things already happening in downtown Clearwater. There's great restaurants, the Capitol Theater continues to be sold out, there are Blast Fridays, there are, we've got yoga going on in the Coachman Park, even though the park has not been renovated yet. You know, I hear people throughout the city saying, oh, there's nothing going on down there. Well, I live blocks from there in Harbor Oaks, and I'm down there a lot. And I believe that, you know, when I hear somebody say, oh, I have nowhere to go to eat dinner before I go to the Capitol, that's not true. There are many restaurants that are down there, start talking about how wonderful they are. That's, we have Clear Sky is gonna be opening soon down there, we have a pizza place, we have sushi. There's wonderful things to come down to downtown Clearwater, and I encourage everybody to stay very involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I would caution the public that the Florida Legislature is in session, and they are considering several things that, right now, are, reduce your city's ability to respond to you. One of the things is possibly the elimination of community redevelopment agencies, another is to limit our ability to regulate roadside wireless transponders on your property, and provide your city a petence for that service. To further regulate short-term rentals, or to prohibit, or to limit your city's ability to, to limit short-term rentals in residential communities. But beyond that, let me talk to you about one of our former council, council members, commissioners at the time, Colonel Richard Fitzgerald, who passed away a couple weeks ago. He was one of the prime movers between the Countryside Rec Center and the Countryside Library. While he was on the, the council, he served on the Regional Planning Council, the League of Cities, and even though he wasn't mayor, the mayor at the time delegated him the task going to the mayor's council. While on the mayor's council, the mayor's council accepted a challenge from County Commissioner Rainey to develop a countywide sign code. I think that perhaps he thought that they could hardly agree on where to meet for lunch, but they came up with a countywide sign code, and a lot of what Councilmember Cordell just talked about being a beautiful county is a result of that. And at the last meeting, I talked about the Athenian Oath, and with this meeting, I'd like to close with a quote from Charleston Mayor Joe Riley, who I think is a kind of a tribute to Dick Fitzgerald. "Our cities are precious heirlooms that we inherit, and we must pass them on to future generations, more beautiful than we found them." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamilton?
I think I've said enough.
Mr. Kind of.
Mr. Mayor, may be telling you in a minute that the 400th Home by Habitat Humanity is being dedicated tomorrow. It's not tomorrow?
No, no, it's next week, but we are dedicating one to-
Next week. There is one tomorrow. It's not the 400th.
It's 399.
What I was leading into was my chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, Clearwater chapter, is going to be donating a, an outdoor wall-attached flag to each new home that goes up in the county, and I'm really happy for that, and wanted to give them a little credit. And I love America, we have free speech in our country, we have freedom of religion. Many countries don't have that, and we have it because of the First Amendment to our Constitution. And one of the reasons we have freedom of worship, freedom to believe what we want to believe, whether others agree, agree with us or not, is be, is because before the amendment was passed, before we had a constitution and Bill of Rights, there were churches, Baptist churches, Presbyterian churches, other churches that were not part of the established church under, under English rule, that were being discriminated against. And their ministers and others in their congregation were being chosen to be in the British Army, here in the States, Royal Army, at a higher rate than, you know, other people. And so there was a list of grievances that some of these churches put together, that ended up being resolved by putting that freedom of religion in, in the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment. So I hope you take that very, very seriously, as I do. And we have the right to disagree with each other, but I will defend to the death anyone to speak on their religion, freedom of speech. And why would I do that? Because we may be the next one, the next group that people will speak against, and it's in our Constitution, and it's in there for a great reason. Thank you.